Hey, good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson, our City Engineer, to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings you give us, Lord. We just thank you for the season. Father, we thank you for the Thanksgiving holidays coming up, Lord. We just pray your blessings on that day and all that takes place there. Father, we pray your continued blessings on this great city. Just pray that we use each and every opportunity you give us to bring you honor and glory as you only deserve, Father. We pray for wisdom and guidance for the council, the mayor, his office, and all the employees here, Father, as we go about your business. Let us always seek you, never resist you at any time. We give you all the thanks and the praise in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on November 19th. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 15th through the 21st. So moved. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. We have none today, so we'll move into item eight, which is unfinished business. Item eight A is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2025 budget. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It places $10,000 in funds for the Gadsden Arts Council. Under the Gadsden Museum of Art rather than outside agency funding, the funds will be used for art council events. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3584 for towing and recovery services. The fleet maintenance manager has recommended awarding to hair wrecker service. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I just want to make it clear that this is actually the contract for towing services just for the city fleet maintenance department. So in other words, if a garbage truck or a leaf debris truck were to break down, this does not include the rotation that our police department has established that calls on various local wrecker services, for instances where a vehicle has to be removed from the roadway or something like that. Again, this is just for city vehicle contracts, and this was a bid process.
All right. Thank you very much for that. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the beautification board. Wait a minute, did we get the 10, the trucks? Oh, let's see. Oh, we sure did. I appreciate that, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, sir.
Let me go back to item number 10. It's a resolution authorizing purchase of two 2025 Chevy Silverado Police Package vehicles for the fire department. The vehicles are on the state bid list and will be purchased from McSweeney Auto Group, Clanton LLC. The total amount is $120,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just a point of clarification, when we talk about the term PPV or Police Package Vehicles, that simply refers to some elevated safety equipment and decals and lighting that you would typically see on a police vehicle. So these will be for the fire department, so they'll be branded with the Gadsden Fire Department logos and lighting systems.
All right. Good deal. Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, now we'll go to item 11. It's a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the beautification board. This resolution appoints Nail Minton and reappoints Anthony Foster, Patrice Mosley, Tiffany Parnell, Wynell Williams, Kitty Pate, and Pat Sherman. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution accepting conveyance of property from Gadsden Land Bank Authority. This is two parcels in Cherokee Estates identified as PIN numbers 44384 and 44366. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Just clarify, this is just concerning two very small pieces of land that were donated to the land bank. The building department and the engineering department is, that are 100% not buildable, but the engineering department does believe that they'll need them for future drainage projects. So we're just transferring it from the Gadsden Land Bank Authority to the city so the city can have access to it to do future drainage projects. But again, two very small pieces of right of way.
Sure. All right, thanks. Any other comments? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2025 budget. This ordinance transfers $20,000 from the fire tax fund to purchase furniture for fire station number five. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 14 is an ordinance under first readings, is amending City Code Chapter Two Administration, Article Six, Boards, Committees, and Commissions. This ordinance will establish an Arbor Board, which will have 12 members. Seven appointments will be made by the City Council and five by the mayor, all of which will be approved by the council. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 15 is new business. I believe we have a few items today. I'll start in District One with Councilwoman Latham. She has some that are pertinent to her area. 973, do you have it?
Yeah, I have it. It is for asking that--
This is your final call.
Thank you. I'm asking that the rules be suspended for legal document, legal department for 2024 973. This is requested by the engineering department, resolution authorizing agreement with JBW and T Incorporated to provide professional engineering and consultation services to construct the Adams Park area Phase One Drainage Project. This is budgeted for $183,776.52, and it would be from the ARP funding account plus 320, 340.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Immediate consideration. Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is that your only one, Council?
Yeah, I think that was all.
Okay. Councilman Avery, I believe you have some.
There's two. Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. One will be a companion resolution to the first one. The first resolution that I'm going to ask for consideration today will be legal document 2024 975, coming from the engineering department. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3575 to Lambert Contracting LLC for the Agrocola Drainage Improvement Project Phase Two for 3.3 million. This is account is reserved for the ARP funding. To give a, just tad bit background, Phase One will cover Nakalula Road down to Marvin's area, which was a 2.8 million. And then Phase Two will go from Jacksonville Court, Tuscaloosa Avenue over to Ivan Street area. So a lot more grounds to cover, but nevertheless, looking at 3.3, all ARP funding, same company, so it will be, it'll be a project going from one to the other, being that it's the same company, worked in, worked hand to hand and great for the scenario of it. So I'll ask for consideration today for this one, and then I'll come back with the companion.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Move to adopt.
Consent has been granted.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
All right.
Motion carries to adopt.
The companion resolution to this is a resolution authorizing agreement of the purchase of sale of mitigation credits with Wethervert, Westervelt, okay, Services LLC. It's a lot of, I guess, engineering language to this, but nevertheless, what I'm going to do is I'll send an email to the mayor's office and ask for a community hearing on this project. I think it would be good for the community to hear and understand what is, will be taking place coming soon in our community as it relates to the drainage project that is well-needed for our community. And so no better person can explain this other than the engineer, in my opinion. And so this, again, is a companion to Phase One and Phase Two are that entire project. It's budgeted for $186,250. This is also for ARP funds plus 320, 340 account, so I'll ask for community consideration today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have a few today. I apologize. And just for a point of clarification on that last one, we had a little bit of a discussion in pre-council about this, but I just want the public to be able to hear this. When we buy these mitigation tax credits or environmental credits, basically as part of this drainage improvement project, there's a creek that the Army Corps of Engineers oversees that we may have to modify in one way or another. And if you do that, the government says, okay, well, if you're going to modify this area, you have to go out and promise us that you're going to preserve some other area that's of equal importance. And so the way we do that is we buy these environmental credits. And all that does is make sure that the landowner that owns another piece of land here in the community promises to us in return for us paying him for these credits, he agrees not to ever develop that property, not to ever modify the river. So we're essentially preserving one part of land in order to do a drainage project in another part of the same water basin. So, sorry.
Thank you.
I know those tax credits can be really confusing, so. The first one I have, Mr. President, is from Fleet Management. This is a resolution rejecting all bids for bid number 3581 for a 2025 Ford Explorer XLT for the building department. I'm not sure, here we go, that the comments from the Fleet Management Department simply says they did not receive a bid that was able to meet all of the bid specifications and that they will rebid bid number 3581. So it looks like we couldn't find a dealership that could get all the specs on the vehicle that we were looking for and the timeline that they needed it. So if there's no objections, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business so they can get that new bid going.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next one I have is from the Community Development Office. This is really exciting, and I love to see us taking advantage of some of these federal programs. But this is a resolution authorizing increasing the funding for CDBG Rehabilitation and Emergency Repair Services Program. For those of you who aren't aware, I think our existing budget was $200,000. This will increase it by $100,000. This is a program where we receive federal dollars, what we call CDBG money, also known as Community Development Block Grant Dollars. So that's federal money that we get to invest, taxpayers' money that we get back from the federal government to invest back into the city. And some of the ways we can do that is through helping with home repairs for those low to moderate income individuals in our community that otherwise can't afford to have their roof replaced, or have their HVAC replaced, or their windows repaired, or things like that. So up until now, the limit we've had on each one of those projects was $4,999, just under $5,000. And what this resolution will do, will raise that amount from $5,000 to $25,000, because what we've discovered is a lot of these community development improvement projects, home improvement, emergency repair projects, because the cost of everything has increased so much recently, a lot of these projects are well over $5,000. So it really prevents us from being able to have the impact that the program's designed to have. So by raising that to $25,000 per program, now we can actually have an impact on somebody who has an emergency situation. And like we talked about in the pre-council, you know, I would rather do 10 houses that cost $25,000 to repair than 50 houses that cost $5,000, because they're going to be halfway done. So I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right. So if there's no objections to that, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Last one I have, Mr. President, is a resolution from the EMA Director authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Department of Homeland Security for a 30-foot mobile command and communication trailer, providing first responders, elected officials, and others the ability to co-work together in one space to effectively mitigate issues. This grant is 100% funded. There is no match. So that's pretty rare, even in our world, to get a 100% funding from a grant. Normally, the city has to contribute, sometimes it's 20%, sometimes it's 30%, and the federal government or the state agency will provide the rest of it. This is unique in the sense that we can get 100% of the cost to buy this critical mobile command trailer that the EMA and our first responders will use in the case of emergencies, and it's 100% funded by the grant. So being a big fan of free money, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson and other council members. I believe that concludes our new business. We'll now move into Section 16. This is department reports, committees and boards. I believe we have some this morning. We'll entertain Derek Mumert from the EMA as he sprints to the microphone.
Well, I had to get up here before the AMP and with Janet from the AMP and Christina from Nakalula Falls.
Yes.
So I just wanted to say thank you all for moving forward with a resolution to accept the grant from Department of Homeland Security. This is a very competitive grant. All the EMAs around the country actually apply for this grant, so to be selected is a big deal. Personally, I would like to thank Mark Golden, our Deputy Director, spearheaded this project. You know, I helped along the way, but you know, he really took the reins on this, and his grant narrative, which is one of the things that they take heavy consideration into, is absolutely eloquent, you know, and we have deadlines that we have to meet for this. So being able to go ahead and start the bid process, we're actually going down next week to a company to actually get a trailer specked out. So this is a big help, so thank you all very much.
Again, thank you, and thank Mark Golden for his efforts to secure this 100% federal grant. That's a real big deal.
Absolutely.
$114,000.
And Ann Payne as well, because she's going to be the one dealing with the financial side of things.
Okay.
So she's got a big job ahead of her as well.
Without a doubt. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for being here this morning. And next, we get to hear about Christmas on the Couche. Y'all, I'm excited.
How are you guys doing today?
Probably not as excited as you are, but I'm excited.
I'm so excited. We have so many great things going on. First of all, Christmas on the Couche. We are getting there and get everything prepped and ready. Super excited. This Friday is our opening day, and lots of things going on. We'll have The Grinch, Santa, Cindy Lou Who. We have a young lady who actually competes on an ice skating team, who has actually come on board. She is going to be one of our employees. She's going to open up with the breaking of the ice and do a performance on that night. She's also going to be an assistant for skating. So if you're a parent and you don't want to get on the ice, but your children's do, during her time there, she can take your kids around the ice skating rink, which I think is going to be a great addition. Of course, we'll have food trucks there, Frosties Bar there, so a lot of great things going on. We will be open the first three weeks, it'll be Thursday through Sunday, opening at 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM we'll close. And then starting the 18th, 19th, when the children get out of school, we're going to be open straight through January 4th, and we're open an hour earlier, so we'll be open starting at 4:00. In addition to that, we move right on to December 3rd, which is going to be the Christmas Parade. I know we're all excited about that. There's lots of people who have entered and getting ready and doing their floats and everything. That will start at 6:00 PM downtown Gadsden. And then on December 6th, we have got the lighting of the Christmas tree that everyone has been waiting on. We're super excited about that. Just a little information on that, it's 147 panels and over 2,500 ornaments that we actually put on the panels before they put the tree up. So a lot of work went into it. We're super excited and very excited about seeing it all come to life down there, and hope everyone will come out. That'll start at 5:00 PM. A lot of things are going on. You can ice skate that night. Of course, we've got several people who will be there doing performances, including Gadsden State Showband and Choir Group, so we hope everybody will come out for that. And then we do have two additional events that we are going to do at the AMP. It's going to be our Christmas movie nights. One of them will be on December 14th, the other one on the 21st. They're both free events. We'll have some food trucks out there. It's going to be three different movies on each night, so three movies shown, starting at 4:00 PM on the 14th and the 21st. Movies include The Grinch, Christmas Story, Home Alone, Daddy's Home Two, and of course, two of my favorite, Elf and Christmas Vacation. So lots of great things going on, good reason to get in the Christmas spirit, and I think there's more Christmas spirit coming right behind me. Anybody have any questions?
Janet, tell us where we can find, I mean, you just, that's a litany of events that are happening, and which is fantastic. There's so much to do.
Yes.
But tell everybody where we can find that information, like city website or something like that.
Oh, absolutely. I know everybody has Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, so they can all be found on the City of Gadsden website, the AMP website, Greater Gadsden Tourism website. So, and if they have any questions, they can feel free to call my office. And one more thing about the ice skating rink, you can go on City of Gadsden Facebook page. It'll take you right to the link where you can buy the passes for Christmas on the Couche. So you can also do a combo pass, which we're real excited about, helps save money, and you can come to Christmas on the Couche as well as Christmas at the Falls.
I know John Moore's not with us this morning, but can you speak to the sponsors? I've seen some pictures, and there's sponsors that have helped put this on. Just want to be clear that, I mean, it is an expensive endeavor, but we did get money from Nettawall County Commission, and I think we got a $25,000 grant from the state, and then we have sponsors that are helping to pay for everything.
We do. We have a lot of sponsors that have come on board, and anybody that wants to be a sponsor can. It's a great way to put your name out there. The dasher boards, they look great with those names around them. They started putting those up last night. We still have a few left, and it's not too late. So if anybody is interested in helping sponsor this great event, we would love to have them as a sponsor.
That's great. Yeah, they do look good. I saw a picture last night on Facebook, I think.
Yes, and you know, we have some other areas. Greater Gadsden Tourism, they sponsored our stage. We have our polar bear area, Wind South Credit Union. We've got a new area where you can bring, the kids can bring their letters that they've written to Santa, drop them in the mailbox, and there's a really cool photo op. It's Santa's Wish Corner. So a lot of great things going on. There's so much, you know, you kind of have to get it all in, and I kind of forget everything we do have going on, but we do hope that everybody will come in and support it. And you know, to skate, it's only $10 during the week and 15 on the weekend, and that's if you buy it online. It will be a little more expensive to pay at the door. But you know, we just want everybody to come out and enjoy it. And even, you know, if you don't want to skate, just come and hang out and go to Frosties and enjoy some great food.
That sounds good. The reason why I want to bring that up is that there's so many helpers that are out there.
Yes.
And we're responsible for the city's money, and we want to spend it wisely. So this is, the city is expending funds for this, but we have, I think, majority of the funds are coming from companies, local companies and people that are sponsoring this. So I think that's important to note, that it's a, it's a real community coming together, not only to help, but financial help as well.
Oh, exactly. If it wasn't for our sponsors, I mean, we couldn't do any of the events that we do. I mean, we are so grateful that Gadsden and our surrounding areas, they have, because it's not just Gadsden. I mean, we have people in other areas that help sponsor our events and great businesses. I mean, you know, even like Smoke on the Falls, we have old Smokey out of Tennessee that helps sponsor. So I mean, if it wasn't for people who are very generous and they really want to see our community and Gadsden grow and our events grow, we wouldn't be able to do these events. And we are very, very thankful for those people.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for all your work. I know I've seen you out there with the hose, you're spraying the water to get the ice ready and--
It's fun. I mean--
Oh, wow.
You know, a lot of people say, I wouldn't be able to do that. And I'm like, good, because somebody wouldn't have a job, you know, if everybody wanted to do my job. But I do truly love my job. It's really exciting, and it's not fake at all. But I mean, it takes a lot of work and a lot of dedication, and so, you know, it's just something to be proud of, and we're excited to offer it to the city.
Thank you, and for all the others that are helping. And Christina's going to come tell us about Christmas at the Falls. Christina, thanks for being here. I know you've got too much to do. We're taking you away from your work.
We are open, yes. So Christmas at the Falls opened Friday. We had a great weekend. Let's see, over 3,000 people we saw through the weekend, and actually, last night, our first Monday night, we had 1,000 in attendance last night, so we're off to a great start for sure. And then, our staff has already shifted over, helping with the parade float, and been helping Janet out a little bit with the ice skating rink, and then they'll be decorating City Hall and Carver Community Center next week. So we're still decorating the city and spreading Christmas cheer. But Christmas at the Falls is off to a great start. We are open nightly, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, $10 during the week, 15 on the weekends. We do have a ton of food vendors on site, and then The Grinch will be joining us Thanksgiving night, and Santa will join us on Friday night. Petting Zoo's fully open, the new barn's open, so everybody can see the animals while they're there, visiting the lights as well.
That's amazing. It's a, can you, I had a question. Somebody asked me and I didn't know this answer. What happens if they've bought a ticket and it rains?
If they buy a ticket...
Like it rains it out?
Okay, so if we close for rain, we send everyone a text message and an email. If they opt in, so they need to opt in to that when they purchase their tickets, because we have people get mad when they don't get that message, but you do have to opt in, we will send out mass texts, mass emails, and give them the option to move their ticket to another night. We do not refund, but we will let them move it to another night. If they do not see a night that they can move it to, we will give them a credit to use the next year. We also post on Facebook, on our website, if we're closing, we change the auto attendant, so there's lots of ways for them to find out if we close due to rain. But unless it's coming a crazy storm, we try to be open so that people can get out and see the lights. If it is drizzly raining and we do decide to stay open, we still give folks the option to move their tickets, because some have young children or elderly or something, and they don't wanna get out in the weather, and that's fine. We're pretty flexible on moving those tickets for them. They just need to call the office or send us an email.
Okay, all right. Well, that, thank you for that information.
Yeah.
I had a phone call and I thought, you know, that's a great question, but I don't know the answer, so I didn't wanna give them an incorrect answer.
Right, right, yeah.
I think that's a fair answer.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll work with folks and move their tickets. And then, of course, you know, being open during the week, if you live local, that's a great time to come. We're not crazy crowded, and everything's available during the week that's available on the weekend. This week, we are running a special where we will sell tickets at regular price onsite this week only through Wednesday. So tonight and tomorrow night, you can get a regular price ticket onsite. And then, on the 9th, December 9th, our food vendors are gonna run specials for everyone, so that's a great night to come out and, you know, get a little discount on some food while you're there.
Y'all have done a great job, as always, at the Falls, and we had the ribbon cutting for the animal barn and for the, and I was just amazed at what has transpired up there. It's just, the transformation is very notable, and it's just so positive. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then thank your staff for what all y'all are doing to help make Christmas just a wonderful experience here in Gadsden.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Can you let them know the pet nights? I know one of them is the Christmas Parade night, but then there's another one in December. If you wanna give them those dates, if you don't mind.
So December, let me get this straight, because I keep mixing it up in my head. December 2nd and January 3rd, does that sound right? It's either December 3rd or January 2nd. I mix them up.
What is it for Christmas Parade? Is it Christmas Parade December 3rd or...
3rd, yeah.
December 3rd and January 2nd. I need to put that in my calendar, so don't forget. But those are our pet nights this year. Typically, we do it before we really officially open, but those will be pet nights. Santa will actually be present for the first one, so a lot of times, the pets miss out on pictures with Santa, because Santa doesn't wanna dirty up his suit. But we have a pet-friendly Santa that will be there for that night, so bring your pets and get a picture with Santa. The Grinch will be there as well. We just ask that they don't ride the train and that they do not visit the petting zoo. It happens. It happens, and of course, they do have to be on a leash, so...
Wonderful. Anybody else have any questions? All right, it's exciting. It's an exciting time. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here this morning. Thank you. All right, that's our Department Reports. I guess we have any others? All right, seeing none, we'll go to Item 17, Citizen Request. Joseph Coe has asked to come to speak to the city about appointment to the Water Board, construction of the osmosis plant, and poison water in the Couche. Mr. Coe, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm glad the smiles didn't stop when I came up here, but I would like to make an announcement, Mr. President. Community Thanksgiving of Etowah will be providing plates for everyone at the venue on Thanksgiving Day, and the time is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And for those who cannot come, they will deliver the food to them. And that number is 256-393-8140. And the time will be from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. So we want anyone, anyone in your district, you know people, they will come and bring the food to them. And last year, they fed over 10,000 people on Thanksgiving. That's a lot of people. And it will be at the venue, so if you know of anyone, then you can come yourselves, but just have people to come out.
Thank you.
Today, I'm not here to castigate anyone, but I bring some topics that the constituents would like to hear from you. And one of those deal with the appointment to the Water Board. We all know that the Water Board has seven appointments, and the council members are the one that makes, the council makes the appointment. Two of the members of the Water Board are council members, and that's the question that they've wondered about, is that in law, could it be three, four? What is the mechanism that you only have two council members? Could it be three or just what the situation is? So hopefully, when I leave, you can explain that to the citizens on the council member membership, to the Water Board. Is it three appointments, just two appointments? Do you decide you wanna do it, or how does that operate in that matter? The second point, you see the osmosis plant and also poison water. For the past two years, it's been more than two years, it's been an issue about the water of the Couche River, the water is poisoned, this, that, and the other. But the citizens don't have a feel or feed on just what is going on, what is happening. There's supposedly supposed to be an osmosis plant being built. The Water Board received somewhere around $200 million in their settlement, but there's no information. The citizens don't know what's going on. Is there gonna be an osmosis plant? I heard some months ago that some bids was put out, but we don't have any word at all on what is going on, and the citizens would like to know. You may not know yourself, but it would be nice if you would invite the general manager or whatever his title is to come before the council, and he can possibly explain it to the council and also to the citizens on just what is going on. I have tried to call him, he doesn't answer. Many people don't answer. It's a few you will talk to, but I understand that it's not a problem, but people want to know. We've been talking about this, no one was told to get filters. You have senior citizens, you'll have people, you don't know what's what. Is there gonna be an osmosis plant? When are they going to do it? How long it's going to take? These are just questions that really need to be answered, and possibly, usually, the council could invite this general manager to come over here, and he can at least give this information to the citizens on just what is going on. I hope each of you have a good Thanksgiving, also a good Christmas holiday, and you may not wanna see me sooner, I may not wanna see you either, but have a Merry Christmas and also a Happy New Year, and take care to you and your families.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's always good to see you, Mr. Coe, so you're welcome. All right. All right, that was our only citizen request this morning, so now we'll go to remarks by the mayor and council. The mayor's out today, but Nick Hall and the mayor's office is gonna have a report for us, I believe.
Hey, good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor sends his apologies for not being able to make this meeting. He wanted to start out by thanking everyone that attended the State of the Union that was last Tuesday. It's a nice turnout, even with the weather, it was a great turnout, and he's very excited about announcing the riverfront development, the Couche Harbor that's coming too. So there's been a lot of positive feedback and a lot of positive comments on that. Some of the next comments he has has already been mentioned, but let me reiterate, the Community Thanksgiving is tomorrow, I mean, Thursday at the venue, and there still is time to volunteer, so there would be opportunities to volunteer for that. The Christmas Parade, once again, is next Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM, and he's got the Christmas tree lighting. It will be down here near Marana Park at December 6th at 6:00 PM. And then, finally, there are still several grants that are, and been in the process of being worked on by the mayor's office, and we hope to have some news on that in the future. Okay?
All right.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Nick? All right, well, thank you, Nick. Appreciate that information. All right, we'll go to the council members. We'll start with Councilwoman Latham in District 1.
Thank you, Council President. I really don't have any remarks, but I would just like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and I would encourage you to enjoy your family, enjoy your friends, and just really take the time to be grateful and thankful. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Mr. President, I wanna take an opportunity to give condolences to the Patrick family. A close friend of mine, Sean Patrick, passed, and his memorial service has taken place on last week, and so, of course, we was out of town, so I do want to take this moment on this platform to wish them, or give them condolences, and just continuous prayers in their loss, especially during the holiday season, and to all of those that go through these seasons with a loved one that is not at the table that was there on last year. I wanna give a big thanks to former Councilman Thomas Worthy, Earl Dudley, and the Delta Sorority in their Community Thanksgiving efforts on this past weekend. The volunteers, the Gadsden City Boys and Girls Basketball Team, and all of those that came out and participated and helped. Thank you so much for your continuous efforts that you provide to the citizens of the city. Mentioning the Gadsden City Boys and Girls Basketball Team, they're in their Thanksgiving Tournament in Garnetville, so if anyone has some time, I know they had one on yesterday, and I think their last one is possibly today. I do know they have a game today, I'm not sure if it's their last, but follow them on the Gadsden City Basketball Facebook, and then, of course, you can see their schedule on Gadsden City School System website. Want to congratulate some colleagues out of the city of ours, for those of us of NLC members. Congratulate Mayor Bobby Scott Jr. from Cent standpoint and Rainbow City. I think Councilman Back mentioned this on last week, Councilmember Rainbow City Clark Hopper II elected to the National League of Cities Leadership Position on the Board of Directors. Just wanna just highlight their efforts beyond just their city and advocating for all cities within our USA. Community Thanksgiving has already been mentioned, so I'll mention District 3 will be also hosting its Community Thanksgiving. There were some businesses that wanted to kinda just give back to the community, so on November the 28th as well. When you leave one, you can come to the other from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, 721 Tuscaloosa Avenue, there at Two Carters Fish. There would be to-go plates provided for those families that are interested in just having an extra meal or know someone that is in need, if you wanna stop by and take a plate to someone, whether it's someone homebound, senior, things of that nature. Please feel free to, again, go visit one spot and then come to another. All free, so please make yourself available to come help yourself. I wanted to highlight something that I like, that the Gadsden Transportation Services will be running two routes between 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to help Gadsden passengers to local grocery stores before Thanksgiving. You can find this on the City of Gadsden Facebook page, and it has the times, the locations in where it would do its pickup and drop offs. So please pay attention to that. I find that to be a great service, so I don't think there's a cost. There wasn't a cost listed. I don't believe so. So no cost, so a free service to the public. So for those that, again, that don't have transportation or wanna be, you know, don't wanna drive and utilize the services that the city is offering, please check that out on Facebook, and I'll share it to my page as well, or give me a call, and I'll give you those dates and times again. Not sure where it is en route right now, but I did put out a post that the Gadsden leaf pickup is coming around to District 3, so go ahead and get those leaves blowed out to the street. Make sure that you separate your leaves and your branches so that it won't clog up that machine and mess it up, so that we can keep it moving and going. And so, we should see that in our community, so please, as we are rolling out around to the holiday and those want the yards nice and neat for the families to come in, as well as your community, please make sure you get those leaves out to the streets so that they can be picked up and won't be there in the community blowing as our weather constantly is changing with wind blowing. CCRC, December the 7th, 5:30 PM. There's still time to register for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Christmas Parade. It's in its, I think, 13th year. You can call 256-328-4750 or visit 401 Locust Street to sign up or give donations to the organization as it continues its effort in providing a fun, entertaining Christmas Parade for the community there. And finally, I want to thank the police chief, Chief Jaggers, and the host of officers that came to the community on last week with Coffee with the Cop, and all of those citizens and seniors that came to give their thoughts and concerns as related to dog concerns, speeding and other concerns as it relates to our community, to give alert to the police department. And then, those officers that gave us feedback on what we can do to aid them and our community to help with those things, those concerns that some of us are having. And so, thank you for their time. It was a well-spent hour, and those answers and resources that have been provided. With that being said, I also would like to wish a Happy Holidays to all, and we'll catch you on next go-round. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Wilson.
I just wanna tell everybody Happy Thanksgiving, and as I usually do on holidays, please be careful and don't drink and drive. Believe it or not, Thanksgiving is the most dangerous holiday and for fatalities by car of all the holidays. That includes 4th of July, Labor Day. We have more fatalities on our roadways during Thanksgiving holiday than any other holiday, so please be careful. Please don't drink and drive. They say that some of the most common things to look out for during the holidays, you're usually rushed, you're in a hurry, you're late for that event, which means you're distracted, you're not paying attention to the roadway, and then, of course, inevitably, drinking and alcohol after big parties has a lot to do with that. So if you've been drinking, let somebody sober drive you home. Women, if your husbands are too drunk and they try to convince you they're okay, don't believe them. Just keep in mind that 74% of American men, when asked, believe that they can land a commercial airplane if they have to. We're idiots. Don't listen to us. Take the keys. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thanks. Councilwoman Menoch, follow that up, will you?
It's difficult every week. I just wanna remind everyone that Friday is a pretty large shopping day, and to support our local businesses in Gadsden, we have Plaid Friday. So from 10:00 to 5:00 on Friday, there are lots of bargains, there's lots of places to shop, eat, drink, and be merry. Santa will also be strolling the downtown area from 12:00 noon until 3:00 on Friday, so children are welcome to find Santa walking and talking. So join us in support of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Robinson.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Wilson, does that stat nationwide, or is that just in the state of Alabama?
No, that's nationwide.
Nationwide, I just didn't know if it had to do with that crazy football name we have.
That's just general nationwide. Men think that they can just land a commercial plane with no experience.
So it has nothing to do with the Iron Bowl?
No.
No. Okay.
But that is coming up. I'm glad you mentioned that. And also, on a serious note, Mr. President, and if you don't mind, Councilman Robinson...
Sure, not at all.
To drive home the point about how dangerous it is in Alabama during Thanksgiving, we rake second in the entire United States for fatalities during Thanksgiving holiday weekend, second in the entire country, Alabama does. Number one is South Carolina, and number three is Louisiana. So six of the top 10 states for deaths on the roadway during holidays are southern states, so please just be careful. That's a statistic that nobody wants to be number two.
We could say that Iron Bowl has something to do with that, then, definitely.
Well, I don't know what's gonna happen to your coach after Auburn wins this Iron Bowl, but we'll see.
Part of me, part of me, I'm torn, because, very torn. Roll tide, though. Anyway, a lot of Christmas stuff going on here in the city this next couple of weeks up until Christmas. A lot of Christmas stuff going on here in the city this next couple of weeks up until Christmas. Everybody be safe. Christmas at the Falls did kick off this past week. Had good crowds up there. Traffic was good and everybody did what they were supposed to. Be impatient with everybody. Just be kind, be happy. Happy Thanksgiving. Everybody drive safe like what we've all said and be safe. As far as the Water Board appointment, I don't necessarily know how that works with us. I know that, I know that there wouldn't be seven city councilmen's on the Water Board, by no means. I don't know if there's a cutoff. Do you know, Councilman Back?
There's a statute I was going to refer to, Lee Roberts. I haven't read that statute in a while. So, it was set probably in the 80s to have it the way that it is.
Yeah, where there's two on that. And I know we try to, we try to put council members on a majority of boards in town, just so we have an insight of what's going on. And we are, you know, one-on-one with what's going on in the city. The osmosis plant is getting constructed. I mean, we meet monthly, and those guys are there giving us updates. So, that is getting constructed. And I believe that, and they're already doing bids out on stuff. So, I believe that start date sometime, possibly February, March, early spring. So, that is happening.
Just for the record, it's a reverse osmosis plant.
I was just reading.
If we built osmosis plants, it'd be a totally different thing.
Yeah, right, yeah. Anything else from Nakalua Falls?
It's reverse Nakalua Falls.
Yeah.
No, not at all. Nothing. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, that's, just to kind of wrap things up, I want to thank our city employees. You know, we're talking about all these wonderful events that are starting, that have already started. That means somebody's having to work every night, and then they've got to probably close up and clean up and then start again the next day. So, a big thank you to the city employees of the city of Gadsden for what they're doing. So, everybody can have a happy holiday. And we're grateful for them. And y'all, things are really changing around Gadsden. We've got our standards, we've got the parade, and we've got Nakalua Falls. But Nakalua Falls has taken it up a few steps with the new animal barn and just what's going on up there. There's more lights. And then, you've got right here on the river, the new ice rink with real ice this year, not the synthetic that we had last year. And so, we've got a new Christmas tree that we're going to celebrate here in a few days with the lighting of that. It's just, it's just a, if you drive around here at night, I think you're going to feel just a whole different feel for what's going on. State of the City last week, some really exciting news from Mayor Ford about Coussa Harbor, which will go be located behind Arby's and McDonald's. It's going to mirror what's happened up in Gunnersville, because the same gentleman that did that private project is going to do this private project. So, to be clear, the city owns the land, but the money that's going to be spent there doesn't come from the city of Gadsden. It comes from a private individual who believes in the city of Gadsden. I met him for the first time last Tuesday night, and I thanked him for coming to Gadsden and for believing in Gadsden, because he's going to probably spend anywhere from $30 to $50 million in the city of Gadsden to build Coussa Harbor. That's a really big deal. And I wanted to thank him. I wanted to thank him for believing in what we're doing and for believing in the citizens of Gadsden and for bringing his vision that he's already done in Gunnersville, that by the way, generates $950,000 a year in sales tax revenue for the city. He said, "As soon as the Hilton that he's building on that property opens, it'll probably be more like $1.5 million a year in tax revenue." That's a really, really big deal for any city, but especially for like Gunnersville or for Gadsden. He's already started the same type project in Decatur. So, he believes in North Alabama, and he's putting his money where his mouth is. We should all applaud Philip Lawler, and we should all be behind him in what he's doing. Nobody else has done this. I've lived here for 64 years. I didn't, I wasn't born here. I moved here when I was two. We haven't had somebody do that here that I can remember that's just going to come, a singular person, and put that kind of money into the city of Gadsden. I'm grateful for Mr. Lawler. It's going to create jobs. It's going to create tax revenue. It's going to bring more shoppers to Gadsden. It's going to bring more hotel beds that will be used at night. I mean, it's just a, it's just a great thing. So, thank you, Mr. Lawler, and certainly, Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas to him and his family. We had the AgroCola and the Adams Park projects, drainage projects, that we suspended the rules and passed today. Those are the final projects for the ARP funds, $24 million. And it's, December 31st was the deadline, so we're a month in front of that deadline. And I want to personally and publicly thank Heath Williamson, our city engineer. He has been working on this, y'all, for a little over three years, I guess. I can't remember when this money hit. You know, everything's kind of a blur when you talk about COVID and the pandemic. But, when we got that money, that's when he began to work. And it's very competitive to find the bids and to get people to come and make those bids. But, Heath, thank you on behalf of the city council and the city of Gadsden, the mayor's office. None of that money's going to go back to Washington, D.C. It's all going to be spent in Gadsden. And it's all spent on really worthwhile projects, like the AgroCola Drainage and the Adams Park Drainage. So, we've got that money tucked away. It's spent. We don't have to worry about that anymore. So, now, we're just going to see the construction and see better drainage in our city. So, Christmas on the Coussa is what we've been talking about. I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Please do drive carefully. And then, last but not least, I want to announce, due to the Thanksgiving holidays this week, Thursday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday, and Friday's route will not change. So, I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next week.